Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Four members present. Aye, are you on? We, I called your name. Yeah, you're muted. We need a quorum. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning, Councilman Kraus.
I am here. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the roll call. Apologize. I am here.
No worries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five members present.
Thank you. So our next order business is public comment. I would like-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Also here, your, uh, the audio from chambers is cutting in and out. I apologize.
Sorry, I'll try to move the mic closer. Um, so Councilwoman Gross is also with us this morning. Uh, so our next order business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules the council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen, you're currently on mute. So I'll, oh, there we go.
I'm here. I honor my husband, who is a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the nineteen-seventies to twenty-twenty-one. Shady tree, not shady deal in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space. Not a deteriorating building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. We do not consent to detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human feces in the hallway and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except as a green space. The opportunity is here and now to create a green space by condemning and tearing down detrimental building that has caused a threat to the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first names and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer that. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Join our supporters.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Poma Chakman-Yahalahi.
Greetings, Graham Rising, saying good day to all who are present today to hear this most honorable statement. I'm East Poma Chakman-Yahalahi, Grand Council member of the Airbuck Federation of Aboriginal American People, and I'm Grand Inka chief of my own nation, the Onkut Onway Aborigines of the Americas. I will start with the U-Drip that I remind city council, URA Land Bank, and all those that attempt to purport to own or control our lands here in this particular territory. We call it the Delaware Territory. In Article eight of the U-Drip, indigenous people have, and individuals have the right not to be subjected to forced assimilation or the destruction of our culture. And all states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention of and redress for any actions which has the aim or effect of depriving us of our integrity, our distinct peoples and our cultural values or ethnic identities. Any action which has the aim or effect of dispossessing us of our lands, territories, or resources. Any form of forced population transfer which has the aim or effect of violating and undermining any of our rights. And any form of forced assimilation or integration. Any form of propaganda designed to promote or incite any racial or ethnic discrimination against our people. And our peoples shall not be forcibly removed from our lands or territories. No relocation shall take place without our free prior and informed consent of our people and all of our people who are concerned, and after agreement on just and fair compensation and where possible with the option to return. And states shall provide redress through effective mechanisms, and this is including city municipal offices who are under the jurisdiction of this state, which is under the jurisdiction of the government, right? So we're not going to allow people to think that they can wail and skate out of their responsibilities and obligations to assist our people, right? We have been under colonization on our lands and we are still here. We are not the colonizers. And states shall provide redress through effective mechanisms which may include restitution developed in conjunction with our people with respect to our cultural, intellectual, religious, and spiritual property taken without our free prior and informed consent or in violation of our laws, traditions, and customs. And I say this because the URA and the Land Bank have a great opportunity to sit at the table with the indigenous peoples who are the true only holders of all of our lands. And we're not, we're not delineating any part of our land. It is all our land. So all the buildings that are sitting on our lands are our property. For they didn't come from another country. They were here. The materials were here that was used to build these buildings, and most of them were already here when the first invaders arrived. We had cities, towns, villages, hotels, motels, and this is well documented. We are a highly civilized people, a highly standard of living that we did have, and we still continue to thrive to have that today in working with city-
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward at this time. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing none, that'll take us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill eleven-oh-eight.
Bill eleven-oh-eight, Ordinance Amending, Title II, Article Five, Chapter Two Thirty-Seven, Stop the Violence Fund, Section Two Thirty-seven point oh-three, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayors designate thereunder the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of save funds by grantees thereunder in accordance with Ordinance Two Thirty-seven, Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we would discuss the items in the, in the report.
We're, excuse me, we're not. Um, per a meeting yesterday, Ricky Moody is making additional edits to that document, so we're not going to amend any, and we're, Madam President, request two weeks to allow that to be finalized.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill will be held for two weeks. Uh, our new paper, Bill twelve-ninety-three.
Bill twelve-ninety-three, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Belinda Martin and Her Attorneys Friday and Cox in the Amount of Twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to hold for executive session, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held for executive session. Bill twelve-ninety-four.
Bill twelve-ninety-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Loeb and Loeb LLP in an Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars for Legal Services Related to Real Estate Matters.
Motion to approve with very brief discussion.
Second.
Session, Councilman Kraus?
I'm just curious. It's rather vague. I was just curious if anyone is here to speak more directly, uh, what the real estate matters are, or if the administration is more comfortable to go into an executive session.
So I can answer your question, Councilman. Um, this law firm is being retained for the anticipated real estate litigation in connection with the administration's efforts to identify properties that are incorrectly assigned as tax exempt.
Perfect. Happy to support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve-ninety-seven.
Bill twelve-ninety-seven, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution Number Eight Sixty-three of Two Thousand and Eighteen, Effective January one, Two Thousand and Nineteen, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Nineteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Smallman Street Reconstruction by Two Hundred and Seventeen Thousand Two Hundred Forty-three Dollars and Thirty-Something and Increasing Complete Streets One Hundred Seventeen Thousand Two Hundred Forty-three Dollars and Thirty-Something and Increasing Slope Failure Remediation by One Hundred Thousand Dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion-
I'll defer to Councilmember Gross. If she has any comment she wishes to add.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kraus. I have been working with Domi and OMB and our budget office for, um, these funds that are needed for kind of immediate work in two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, um, is Domi here to ask some que, I guess some questions about this, this transfer? I went online.
You want me to have, you want me to call them?
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with this. Is this the, I guess if you allow interrogatory, um, you know, the question is, is Smallman Street Reconstruction in District One?
Yes, um, Mr. Wilson, it is currently District One. Um, and I'm happy to talk more, you know, about that if you're not comfortable today. Um, that, and Domi was digging under, and again, OMB and our budget office dug under all of the appropriate funds, especially for the immediate landslide, um, that, as I think most council knows, our landslide funds are, that we had appropriated in capital budget are quickly depleted. Um, and if we don't stop this one, we'll end up with a bigger budget item, right? Um, so there's that one. And then Domi had committed to two thousand and twenty-three work on Stanton Avenue where we've had fatalities and children struck by trucks at bus stops, um, and ran short of funds for that traffic calming budget line as well. I know all of our districts have a lot of demand for both landslides and traffic calming, and so we're, you know, happy to, to take other suggestions for funds if, if anyone's got them.
Okay, yeah, I'm just not familiar with, you know, as, uh, as we switch, um, areas here that we represent. Just like to be briefed on what's happening. Um, with that-
Sure, that's, you know what, I apologize actually, but, um, this is completed work. It was, um, the Smallman project between sixteenth and twenty-first that was completed several years ago.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, Peter, you have, you made an ad? No, we'll just get your non-add from there. Yeah. Um, all right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Move.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I was looking at the invoices related to Folino under Domi's and, yeah. If you have an answer about, um, the, the amount or the purpose of that, that was the only question I had.
Yep. So we, we will need a motion to waive the rules to approve these. Um, A Folino is under contract. However, these items aren't under, are not included in the contract.
Ah.
So they're working to ensure that moving forward, these items will be included in the contract, but currently they are not.
Thank you. That's helpful. That's all I wanted to know. I was, it just stuck out to me as, as something that should normally be under contract, so, and, and going over the amount. Thank you.
With that, will you entertain a motion to waive the rules?
Uh, motion to waive the rules. Just very brief discussion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, just find it a little bit funny that PVC pipe glue and primer would not be included in the construction contract. But I'm happy, I'm happy to support it. Just that one jumps out in me as well, too. I just think that's why.
I, I had the same question, Councilman. Um, currently it's not included within their contract, but we're working to ensure that it is moving forward.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor of waiving the rules say aye.
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 Any opposed? The rules have been waived. All those in favor of approving the invoices say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices have been approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
Still move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards have been approved. Need a motion, that, excuse me, that takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first new paper is Bill twelve-eighty-eight.
Bill twelve-eighty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Duquesne University for the Purpose of Spending Grand Funds Not to Exceed One Hundred Fifty Thousand Five Hundred Dollars to Support the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Inside-Out Training Program.
Need motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve-eighty-nine.
Bill twelve-eighty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Department of Justice COP's Mini Grant Program for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of One Hundred Fifty Thousand Five Hundred Dollars to Support the Police Inside-Out Training Program with Program Partner Duquesne University.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Does anyone, just maybe I forgot from, but what the inside-out training program is?
Um, the inside-out training program?
Do you introduce yourself?
Yeah, first you just identify yourself.
Yeah, sure.
Do I have to push any buttons first?
No.
Okay.
I'm Sergeant Colleen Bristow. I'm the liaison for the Office of Community Health and Safety, and I'm also a Training Academy Sergeant. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, we entered, we created a program, a recruit-level program out of SCI Pittsburgh in conjunction with Duquesne University where we take all of the recruits inside to the prison to learn amongst inmates. We call them inside people with, and we call our recruits outside people. We learn about victims, victimization, criminogenics, um, trauma, you know, all, all the things that lead people into the path on, on why they are in there. We also want the recruits to understand that when you arrest someone, they don't just disappear, you know, they, they go somewhere and the effects that it has on their family, the effects that it has on them. They talk about when they come out, the barriers that are up against them. We also take the recruits to meet with returning citizens that talk about the barriers that they face when they come back. And we hope, um, it's, you know, it's humanization on, on both ends. It's a humanities-based training where we hope that the people inside see us as humans, you know, kind of break down some of the stereotypes they have about us and that we break down the stereotypes we have that have, you know, been made because of movies, television, things like that, so that we understand and we talk together in the end on how to properly serve Pittsburgh. And we come up with a plan. So every class, you know, comes up with something on what, how, what they wouldn't want to see within their communities on how to better serve Pittsburgh. So from that, everyone gets three college credits from Duquesne University, which we've built into a micro credentialing there, which is, um, in public sociology. From that, the city has been incurring a hundred and ten dollars for each recruit that's gone through. With this grant, the city will no longer have to pay for that for at least the upcoming year, and we hope to see, you know, some sustainability after that. So it would actually save the city some money for that. And then the, the inside guys also get the college credits, too, because, you know, part of this is we hope that recidivism, you know, aid in recidivism within the people that are in the class. But it's really great. And anyone's ever welcome to come, if anyone, everyone's to come.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
That takes us to our Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill twelve-ninety.
Bill twelve-ninety, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Dedication of a Portion of Harvard Street, eighty-three P one sixty-seven being Parcel B, as laid out on the subdivision plan of Block Alot eighty-three P one sixty-five, as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate and Plan Book Volume Two Ninety, Page four, in the eleventh ward, Ninth Council District.
A motion to approve. Very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just to defer to Councilman Burgess, being this is in the Ninth Council District, if he has any comment, just wanted to provide opportunity.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess is not with us this morning.
Okay, then I'll, a motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve-ninety-one.
Bill twelve-ninety-one, Resolution Granting Unto Garden Theater Block LLC. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a grease interceptor below the sidewalk of Four West North Avenue, Twenty-Second Ward, First Council District.
Motion to approve. Again, brief discussion.
Second.
Second discussion, Councilman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll defer. I believe this is Councilman Wilson, I believe, if he wishes to make comment.
It is.
Is the grease trap? Oh, yeah. Let's get it done.
You're correct.
Let's put the grease trap in.
All right, he has no discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve-ninety-two.
Bill twelve-ninety-two, Resolution Granting the Vacation of an Unopened Portion of Wabash Street Located in the Rear of McKnight Street, as shown on plan of the Denny Estate, as recorded in Plan Book Volume Seven, Page two, Twentieth Ward, Second Council District.
Motion to approve. Again, brief discussion.
Second.
Question?
Uh, yeah, I'll defer. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll defer to Council President Kell Smith. I think this is her, uh, her council district, if she wishes comment.
It is, and President Smith is also not with us this morning.
Okay, then motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first deferred paper is Bill six-sixty-one.
Bill six-sixty-one, Resolution Accepting a New Street Name Would Ring Court in the Twenty-third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June of two thousand and twenty-two. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Uh, motion to, uh, motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Yeah, I was gonna motion to hold for another four weeks, but I just wanted to, you know, everyone's been, um, on Councilman's kind. Everyone on council has been kind to, uh, you know, follow my lead on this. But I'd like to give some, a little explainer on why I've been holding this, this, uh, this bill here, six-sixty-one. So I've been in communication with the community group, which is Community Alliance of, uh, Spring Garden East Titchtown, otherwise known as CASGAD. And CASGAD, um, is not an RCO currently, and they are, uh, going to take on that process so that they can have a development activities meeting, the day of meeting. Um, so, you know, I just think in the light of the post agenda, in the light of, um, the discussion around RCOs, uh, you know, it's just, it would give the community group an actual, um, you know, some standing to really hear from the developer that wants to build new townhomes, uh, in a, in an area that, you know, hasn't been developed, um, in a long time. So, you know, I, I think that it's some, I think this is one important aspect of the RCO, uh, status so that they can, they can have this opportunity. Cause so far, from, from their standpoint, the developer has not, um, you know, come to the, the community in a, in a, a good faith, um, effort on their own. And so been holding this bill so that we can have this conversation. And in the light of that, you know, it came out that there is some way that they could have some standing if they got RCO status. So I'm not an RCO expert, but I just want to make the point that, uh, we're gonna hold this bill until they get the status and they have that meeting, and then they could, um, you know, if all goes well with the project, then we can move forward with it. But I'm going to ask for a hold for four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Bill will be held four weeks. Bill eleven-seventy-eight.
Bill eleven-seventy-eight, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Code, Article Five, Section Nine Twenty-five point oh-six, Setbacks to Update the Standards for Certain HVAC Equipment and Setbacks.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held for cablecast public hearing. Bill twelve-forty-nine.
Bill twelve-forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in Operation Better Block for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of Two Million Five Hundred Thousand Dollars to Support the Safe Passages Program, which Places Community Elders in Schools to Prevent Violence.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Come- Okay. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, do you know anything about this?
Madam President had asked for a legal opinion on this. We have not received a legal opinion yet.
So is there a request to, to hold until we get that opinion?
Yes.
For how long?
Two weeks, maybe? Good.
Take it a week at a time?
That's fine.
Motion to, motion to hold one week.
Second.
Session, Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, I, I do just want to say that, you know, specifically in my district at Alder Dice High School, having, having a program where there are adults accompanying kids to the bus stop at Mer, would be extremely helpful. I mean, we have, I just am hearing endlessly from various folks. Um, and I, I am concerned about the students being demonized. Uh, I'm concerned about the- about the students being demonized, I'm concerned about the businesses, this is, you know, PRT has been cooperative in that they are providing to, an additional bus at that time, you know, during that time period so that more kids can get on. Everyone would really like PRT to just pick the kids up in front of the school, considering that you have, you know, this is a large number of PRT customers, you know, PPS is a large PRT customer, and that would ultimately, I think, solve the problem, would be to just simply pick the kids up at school, right, in front of the school, period. But that is the solution. I want that to be known, that's my opinion of the very simple solution to this problem, but in the meantime, you know, a program, and I understand why we need the legal opinion, but a program that is, you know, sort of a Band-Aid to get, you know, have adults from the community who, you know, presumably know the kids, are familiar with the kids, you know, accompanying them to kind of maintain a certain amount of just, you know, calm and whatnot, making sure everybody gets home safely would be helpful, to say the least, in this, in this particular situation. I don't know if there's other schools and other council member districts that are experiencing similar issues, but.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm kind of interested in the, the subject, like the proposal here, it sounds really appealing, but I'd also requested that the materials be sent to council, and I just wanted to acknowledge that they were, I think our own budget office had all of the attachments sent to us last week, so members might see that in their inbox. There's a variety of documents, including the, the written narrative of the application, letters of support that were submitted late last year, and the budget, like the budget lines for how the, what's the total again? $2,500,000 would be spent, I think it's over two years. Okay, so just to know that that part's already in your inbox. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of a one-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to our last committee of the day, Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. We have one paper, Bill 1295.
Bill 1295, Resolution Amending Resolution 532 of 2022, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto for professional services with E Plus Technology, Inc., for system critical adjustments, improvements, and upgrades to maintain the City of Pittsburgh's network functionality at an additional cost not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, so this is just to extend, we have an engineer who is working on firewall and also network system upgrades that will further help folks with hybrid work, so that's what this is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. Our meeting announcement is that next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meeting on Tuesday, March 21st, and Wednesday, March 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, and may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.